This time, so we are opening at 6:12. Does anybody have any public comment on this matter? I think there was one signed up. Was there one signed up? Two. Oh, here we go. Seeing a lot of fours. Oh, here we go. Mr. Prescott.
Hello. Congratulations on your running the committee. It was wonderful to serve with you in the past. I know you're gonna do a great job.
Thank you very much.
So, I don't really have a lot to say. Figured I would sign up in case I wanted to say something, but congratulations on starting this. We've already always need good places to go and I'm not really a cigar smoker. The only time I did smoke, I got really sick, so I don't want to do anymore. Of course, I did mix it with much other stuff, so maybe we'll try it out. No, I mean, the thing I would like to point out is he is literally backed up to people that are odd in the city. So, not that we don't want to be good neighbors to anybody else, but I don't know who would complain about him having music there. And so, seems like a reasonable request for what he wants to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We'll call your board.
There you go.
All right, we are closing. Public comment at 6:13. Commissioners, thoughts?
What's the stop time on Saturday nights for the goat?
I don't want to use that kind of a statement.
Bailey's got better information.
Go on, it's Friday night, it's...
We stay consistent.
I think we should stay consistent. Do we want to use... You know, because with the goat and then the twine, we use kind of the same language even throughout like weeknights and things. We want to use that as well or only limit it to the weekend?
I don't see any problem with just copying what we've done.
The blanket statement.
Yeah. Just don't restrict them to only, you know, Saturday or Sunday and maybe there's a holiday Monday.
Right. Okay. Bailey, could you read that out for us? What those hours were, you said, between...
For the goat or for twine?
I think they were the same, weren't they?
What did he say?
So, for the goat, for Sundays, it's 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Monday to Thursday, it's 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, it's 11:00 AM to 10:30. And then they did call out the New Year's Eve, which is 11:00 AM to midnight. And then the twine is Sunday to 1:00 PM, or Sunday, 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Monday to Thursday, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then they called out federally recognized holidays, which is 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Twine would be more of a residential surrounded location, so I would think the goat would be more goat. That's my thoughts.
So, one more time. So, I think you said Sunday at the goat was 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am. And then Monday to Thursday is 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then Friday and Saturday is 11:00 AM to 10:30 PM.
Okay. Okay. Anybody like to make a motion? I can do it. All right, let's do it, yeah. So, I make a motion that we recommend approval with conditions for item 2.3 of the request on behalf of... On the request of a special use permit to allow a theater stage and live performance venue outside as an accessory use in a library cigar lounge located at 4400 US Highway 281 north, Suite 1, Spring Branch, Texas 78070. And the conditions are as follows for the opening out over the performance hours on Sunday from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM to 10:30 PM. The motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? No? No. Same. Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Onto the next. So, 2-4, full of public hearing and consider request by Samir Kahade. I apologize if I'm pronouncing incorrectly. With One Stop Group LP on behalf of Dash Interest LLC for the establishment of a PDD planned development district with a base zoning of R2 and R3 residential districts for approximately 329 acres, generally located one mile north of the intersection of Highway 281 and FM 1863.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and congratulations. This request is for the establishment of a PDD planned development district to establish residential zoning on 329 acres of the 388-acre McCarthy Ranch property on Highway 281. The applicant is proposing 229 single-family residences on a minimum of one acre lots. The applicant is requesting a list of modifications to the city's credit ordinances. The modifications are related to the setback requirements for residential lots, the lot aspect ratio and lot width requirements, parkland dedication requirements, cut, fill, and disturbance within steep slope requirements, street geometry requirements, tree survey, tree removal, and tree mitigation requirements. And lastly, modifications to the riparian buffer requirements. In the staff report, there is a section on the history of this property. In summary, this property does not have an active MDP nor is it vested to older city regulations. This development is required to comply with all of the current city ordinances. The applicant has provided all of the seminal requirements to be considered a completed PDD application. This includes a conceptual site plan, a zoning statement, and proposed utility providers as indicated in the staff report package. And the applicant does have a presentation that I believe he would like to take over from here. And Ms. Ham, we did have an updated US...
Yes. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. It's lovely to be here tonight. I really appreciate your being here. We heard, I wished I was this gentleman here providing cigars and drinks. I know it's not always pleasant to be the developer owner, so, but we're here respectfully. We have gone through this process very carefully. We just want to give you an overview. My hope is that we will answer a lot of your questions in this overview. We'll go through it really quick and obviously all yours after that.
And there is a clicker up there for me?
There is a clicker. It's at the top one here. Thank you.
Does it work?
All right, so, there we go. All right, so the agenda is script. We'll introduce our group really quickly, talk about market, let's try our behavior, talk about the property. We have a lot of community input. We pride ourselves in this process that we went through, and then we'll discuss our application very quick. In terms of who we are, you've heard TriMark Developments, you've heard One Stop Group, you've heard SES Partners. We all operate under one umbrella, which is TriMark Group of Companies. Our mission is truly to just build nice communities. Now, nice communities, the concept varies from area to area. From a nice community downtown, San Antonio is going to be very different, a nice community here in Belverde. So, we have multiple projects. I'll go through some of them. In terms of little bit about our history, I normally don't go over this, but in the town hall meeting, there was a lot of questions about who we were, being smaller group. Thought we'd just put this up there. So, we've been land developers since 2007. We operate out of Canada, Texas, and North Carolina. We launched the San Antonio operation in 2014. We are basically land investors and land developers. We do not go vertical. We only do horizontal. And we're very fortunate. We are debt-free. We're a small group of owners. We're very like-minded, very low-key. You won't find a lot about us. It's a blessing and a curse, because many people in this room wanted to learn more about us. Being on the front end of the project lifecycle, generally you don't feel a lot of problem. So, in terms of some of our projects, this project was in Raleigh, North Carolina. High-end townhouses, between 2,800 square feet and 4,400 square feet. Sale price between 1.2 million approximately to 1.9 million, very high, super close to downtown. Where the project had been Canada, we bought about 1,100 acres. We have, that's in Alberta, just north of Montana, for those of you who are not familiar. And this is a lake very close to Calgary, and we're very fortunate to have this project approved. This is large lots. Most are large lots. Some of them are medium-sized half-acre lots. In terms of San Antonio, one of our first projects really came to fruition in 2022. That is on nine-acre property on Evers and Seneca, just north of Fort 10. Initially, we were approved for 94 lots. We ended up going back and reducing it down to 67 after we got feedback from the neighbors. This year, we actually purchased that property by right to private apartments, and we didn't get the feedback from the neighbors whatsoever. So, that's the kind of flexibility we can provide as a smaller developer. This is a project also northwest of Fort 10 and Pendera Road. It's 60 acres. We acquired this land between 2023, 2024, three pieces. We aggregated it, and we're developing a combination of 60-foot lots, 40-foot lots, and 30-foot lots. This is important because you don't see many 60-foot lots in your city these days. So, we were able to mix it up based on neighbors' input. We saw a little bit of a comment, actually a few hours ago, my assistant brought this to our attention. So, there was a post that this developer, basically if you want to see what this developer does, basically this is what we built. We erased all the trees. We're bad developers. So, all developers are bad developers. Hopefully, we will show that we're actually not nearly as bad. So, this particular property, back in 1995, was farmland. There was no trees on it. So, there's no heritage trees on it. Three heritage trees, and we're pushing them. We are, however, putting 800 new trees that are native. So, it's easy to just say stuff, but we understand. I was one of those people that didn't like developers when I wasn't a developer, so it's only fair. We have a portfolio of multiple different types of projects. So, we have an apartment complex. We have a townhouse complex, we have single-family, and now we're hoping for the large lot development. So, that's what our group... In terms of market, what made us come to Belverde is the fact that obviously Comal County is one of the largest fastest-growing counties in the US. And this corridor has been invested heavily into by the state. So, we wanted to explore more, and we ended up being lucky enough to have this opportunity. Now, one of the things that is important to mention here is that we are going with a plan that was based on a lot of feedback from the community. So, we are not...
Okay. Anybody like to make your motion? I can do it. All right. Let's do it, yeah. So I make a motion that we recommend approval with conditions for item 2.3 of the request on behalf of the procedure, sorry, on the request of a special use permit to allow a theater, stage, and live performance venue outside as an accessory used in a library cigar lounge located at 4400 US Highway 281 north, Suite 1, Spring Branch, Texas 78070. And the conditions are as follows for the opening out over the performance hours on Sunday from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM to 10:30 PM. The motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? No, no, abstain, passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On to the next, so 24, full of public hearing and consider request by Samir Kahade, I apologize if I'm pronouncing incorrectly, with One Stop Group LP on behalf of Dash Interest LLC for the establishment of a PDD planned development district with a base zoning of R2 and R3 residential districts for approximately 329 acres, generally located one mile north of the intersection of Highway 281 and FM 1863.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and congratulations. This request is for the establishment of a PDD planned development district to establish residential zoning on 329 acres of the 388-acre McCarty Ranch property on Highway 281. The applicant is proposing 229 single-family residences on a minimum of one acre lots. The applicant is requesting a list of modifications to the city's credit ordinances. The modifications are related to the setback requirements for residential lots, the lot aspect ratio and lot width requirements, parkland dedication requirements, cut, fill, and disturbance within steep slope requirements, street geometry requirements, tree survey, tree removal, and tree mitigation requirements, and lastly modifications to the riparian buffer requirements. In the staff report, there is a section on the history of this property. In summary, this property does not have an active MDP, nor is it vested to older city regulations. This development is required to comply with all of the current city ordinances. The applicant has provided all of the seminal requirements to be considered a completed PDD application. This includes a conceptual site plan, a zoning statement, and a proposed utility providers as indicated in the staff report package. And the applicant does have a presentation that I believe he would like to take over. Samir? And Miss Ham, we did have an updated US. Thank you.
Good evening, Samir. It's that right there. Good evening. It's lovely to be here tonight. I really appreciate your being here. I wish I was this gentleman here providing cigars and drinks. I know it's not always pleasant to be the developer. So, but we're here respectfully. We have gone through this process very carefully. We just want to give you an overview. My hope is that we will answer a lot of your questions in this overview. We'll go through it really quick and obviously all yours after that.
And there is a clicker up there for me?
There is a clicker, just at the top one here. Thank you.
Does it work?
All right, so. There we go. All right, so the agenda is great. We'll introduce our group really quickly, talk about market, let's try our behavior, talk about the property. We have a lot of community input. We pride ourselves in this process that we went through, and then we'll discuss our application very quick. In terms of who we are, you've heard TriMark Developments, you've heard One Stop Group, you've heard SCS Partners, we all operate under one umbrella, which is TriMark Group of Companies. Our mission is truly to just build nice communities. Now, nice communities, the concept varies from area to area, from a nice community downtowns with San Antonio is going to be very different, a nice community here in Valverde. So we have multiple projects, I'll go through some of them. In terms of little bit about our history, I normally don't go over this, but in the town hall meeting, there was a lot of questions about who we were, being smaller group. Thought we'd just put this up there. So we've been land developers since 2007. We operate out of Canada, Texas, and North Carolina. We launched the San Antonio operation in 2014. We are basically land investors and land developers. We do not go vertical, we only do horizontal. And we're very fortunate, we are debt-free, we're a small group of owners, we're very like-minded, very low-key, you won't find a lot about us. It's a blessing and a curse because many people in this room wanted to learn more about us. Being on the front end of the, of a project lifecycle, generally you don't feel a lot of public. So in terms of some of our projects, this project was in Raleigh, North Carolina, high-end townhouses, between 2,800 square feet and 4,400 square feet. Sale price between 1.2 million approximately to 1.9 million, very high, super close to downtown. Where the project had been Canada, we got about 1,100 acres. We have, that's in Alberta, just north of Montana, for those of you who are not familiar. And this is a lake very close to Calgary, and we're very fortunate to have this project approved. This is large lots. Most are large lots, some of them are medium-sized half-acre lots. In terms of San Antonio, one of our first projects really came to fruition in 2022. That is on nine acre property on Evers and Seneca, just north of Fort 10. Initially, we were approved for 94 lots, we ended up going back and reducing it down to 67 after we got feedback from the neighbors. This year, we actually purchased that property by right to their developer's apartments, and we didn't get the feedback from the neighbors whatsoever. So that's the kind of flexibility we can provide as a smaller developer. This is a project also northwest of Fort 10 and Vanderer Road. It's 60 acres. We acquired this land between 2023, 2024, three pieces. We aggregated it, and we're developing a combination of 60-foot lots, 40-foot lots, and 30-foot lots. This is important because you don't see many 60-foot lots in your city these days. So we were able to mix it up based on neighbors' input. We saw a little bit of a comment, actually a few hours ago, my assistant brought this to our attention. So there was a post that this developer, basically if you want to see what this developer does, basically this is what we built. We erased all, all the trees, we're bad developers. So all developers are bad developers. Hopefully, we will show that we're actually not nearly as bad. So this particular property, back in 1995, was farmland. There was no trees on it. So there's no heritage trees on it. Three heritage trees, and we're pretty of them. We are, however, putting 800 new trees that are native. So it's easy to just say stuff, but we understand, I was one of those people that didn't like developers when I wasn't a developer, so it's only fair. We have a portfolio of multiple different types of projects. So we have an apartment complex, we have a townhouse complex, we have single-family, and now we're hoping for the large lot development. So that's what our group. In terms of market, what made us come to Valverde is the fact that, obviously, Pomar County is one of the largest, fastest-growing counties in the US. And this corridor has been invested heavily into by the state. So we wanted to explore more, and we ended up being lucky enough to have this opportunity. Now, one of the things that, that is important to mention here is that we are going with a plan that was based on a lot of feedback from the community. So we are not waiting for state lots to amend to say, you know, you can build small lots. We're not doing it. What we want to do is proceed with one acre lots, with your blessings, with communities' blessings, and just take it from there. So in terms of the property itself, 388 acres, it was annexed in 2016, just west of 281, itself 46. The current zoning across the whole property is R2, R3, so one acre lot, majority is 1.5 acre lot. That is of relevance because technically we could be going with, we'll have acre lots by right. Just wanted to keep that. And then a portion of this property is commercial, the other portion is multifamily, which is apartments. So back in 2017, and again, that expired, but there was a master development plan that was approved by council then, and it was more comprehensive than anything we are presenting. There was 205 single-family lots, there was 300 apartment units, and 224 commercial units approved for this property. In total, over 500 residential clients. So this is what the MDP looks like, probably all familiar with it. This PDD, as Keith just mentioned, we didn't want to touch the commercial or the multifamily. It's not within our wheelhouse. We don't feel this is the right type of development, so we stuck with the R2, R3. That's what we're moving forward with. The reason why that MDP was not developed, it was approved in 2017, this property poses a lot of challenges to any developer, has very difficult geography, which means high cost development, drainage, obviously, issues, sewer availability, water availability, tree protection, environmental protection, and at the end, can you make this work? And is it a good fit for the community? So what I wanted to talk about now is our effort to seek community feedback. We had our first meeting with the previous mayor, as well as the city manager, Mr. Batts. He's very lovely people, very confident, lovely, lovely to run with. And I'm not saying that I really mean, it was such a pleasure. We worked with multiple municipalities, such a pleasure to work with his team. So anyways, we had first meeting, second meeting, third meeting by March. We got a lot of feedback, basically, no high-density, no high-density, large lots, large lots. And then we came forward on March 11th in front of council, just to explore more about what council wanted, what the community wanted. We heard large lots. So what we did though at that point in time, we compiled seven different plans that started back in 2006. And many of those were presented by other developers. We came up with our own sketches. So effectively, the one that made more sense, more sense to us was this one here, which was 538 lots. But obviously, all the feedback was like, absolutely not. Oh, and we get it. And we went back, we listened very carefully, said, you know, so the summary wasn't just, we want large lots, but we also want preserve the feel and the spirit of the whole country, but to mitigate flooding, obviously, that's even now more relevant based on the tragedy that happened a few weeks ago. Need to consider the environment, slopes, trees, wildlife. We do not want sewer treatment plant. Supposedly, there was another project in the city where issues with orders. And in terms of water, well, we need to consider that carefully. And we have, and you'll see, our plan, I believe, is a good plan for that. And obviously, maintaining some of the neighbors had issues of privacy, how do we do that? Now, one acre lots pose a lot of problems for developers. One, we're going to have way less lots. We're going to have more grading, believe it or not, when you have more lots, net cost of development is higher overall than if you had higher density. Not per lot, talking overall, because in this particular case, we're going to have to do more grading in order for us to, to do one acre lots. Because otherwise, before, we could cluster and avoid a lot of storm disruptions. So that being said, we basically went ahead and said, we're going to forge ahead with a plan that is low-density, that is preserving a lot of green space. We are leaving big buffer, green buffer with the neighbors, but also, not just with neighbors around us, but within the community. I will talk about this here in a second. There will be no water towers. We are not linking to the communities next to us in terms of traffic, with one exception, I will talk about in a second, maybe. And talk about water tank. We will talk about the water strategy here in a second. So this is what we came up with, the all-star plan. We then took all of this and called for a town hall meeting. We sent 320 personally addressed adults, and we had about 100 people at them. We thought it was great because we got a lot of feedback, a lot of questions. And we actually had a chance, were allowed by team, to just go back and refine our application a little bit to reflect some of these comments, and we were very grateful for that. We, we gave a brochure with a gesture of leaving people with something to go home with and evaluate instead of just leaving it behind. We scored up and we put the city's logo on it. Was a bad move, was, I take full responsibility for it. We should have checked before our graphic or the center footprint. So our sincere apologies, we did not pay it in any way. So anyways, again, we did, following that, we got some very, very good comments. There were actually about four or five really good emails, complimentary emails, appreciative of our efforts to the central community, to, to what we ended up with in terms of this development, hopefully, compared to other developments. So we'll let you look, look at this later. So now, our application caused us a lot, this is, this was probably honestly, probably the most difficult equation for us to balance, but we got it. So we needed to balance the project by relationship with all the different costs that come with this product. We talked about all these different challenges. So I believe we were successful. We ended up in our application, this is the checklist of all the things that were requested. We end up adding four things, a drainage analysis, a slope area analysis, a water supply analysis, and a onsite sewer facility suitability analysis. We thought if we're going down the path of one acre lot, we needed to make sure that, one, we're actually able to do it. So if we're coming here and saying, but I do, we do one acre lot, but we can't put septic because of the total, well, how is that going to work? So, or if we come in with confidence and say, that's what we want, but we know ultimately it's going to cause drainage issues, well, that's not going to work very well. So we had to front-load a lot of the work normally would happen at plating time, to do it in advance, to ensure everybody's comfortable with this setup. All right, so you've all seen this plan, large lots. I wanted to touch on, on the second point, which is the minimum rear setback of 150 feet. That is very important because that's going to allow us not only on the edges of the development. So basically, Valverde Hills, you see that green belt, and on the south end, another green belt. That's 150 feet that we had reserved as, as a green belt. But we thought, why don't we do this inside the development between the lots? So now people can only build, our typical lot size is 135 by 325. So we will only allow by ordinance, people to build only on the front 175. That will give us 300 feet guaranteed between structures on the, on the back-to-back lots. So now that applies for regular-shaped lots, which is most of the development, as we see. Now, we do have lots that are corner lots, called the SAP, obviously, that won't apply for them. So we did do some calculations in terms of density, I'm not going to go into it, but ultimately, the buildable lot area, the actual density is 38% of the whole problem. We believe this is a very, very good answer. We can revisit it with any questions, have to go over it in more details. Strong conservation plan, we have what, 42 acres of green space, we're planting over 450 new trees, we're paying $200,000 up to it, depending on how much we would owe, in tree preservation. We're quite familiar with some decisions that were made around some developers coming in and requesting a variance on that. We don't, the variance here is to just allow us to not exceed $200,000. Then obviously, the 150-foot setback would also allow for, this is key for wildlife, because we believe that by allowing these big corridors allows a nice flow for the wildlife, so we're not, and there would be no fences. Rainwater collection, tryscaping, natural escaping as a standard. And we believe we have an excellent flood mitigation plan, we'll talk about it here in a second, and we only have one bridge crossing that environmental reserve. You'll see in previous plans, there were two, three, four bridges. We brought it down to one, at a lot of cost, but we did not want to disturb that very much. All right, so, so that being said, on the wastewater sewer, we ended up doing a suitability study, it was done by Mr. Craig Johnson, he works with Pomar County, he's actually the one, to my understanding, that assesses the suitability of existing developments and certifies them. On the water supply, we have two options to put water tanks. One is on the top of our property at the highest point, the other one is north of us, maybe I should just revisit this two seconds, this is relevant. All right, so if you look, at any point with this?
I think so, I think I just touched it earlier.
Is it the top?
Yeah.
There you go, okay. So, so the water tank be here, this is the top of the property, or this is the St. Paul's Church property right here, and they have a pretty high point as well. So this point here is about 13, sorry, 31 or 13 or 9, and sorry, I'm a bit slippery. And the other one is 1319. So the church's highest point is actually higher than ours. Now, why is this a potential? Because we, we had conversations, we don't have an agreement, but the church is very open to having a potential agreement with us. In fact, church back in 2013, congregation met, and they voted in favor of this kind of setup in conjunction with the McCarty's, the McCarty property, to be able to supply both properties for any future developments. We believe that this approach will also pressurize communities around us, i.e. Valverde Hills, because we understand what's been going on on that side, we know there are water pressure issues, we believe working with the Texas Water Company, we're able, will be able to trust that. So in terms of that strategy, we're putting out three stubouts. So I'm going to just show you here what that looks like. So basically, this is one stubout here to Valverde Hills, another stubout, these are easements already in place. There's a stubout that will go up to the church, and that is something that obviously would be part of the deal if we end up in an agreement with them on this side, to put the storage tank on top of their property. And basically, that's all I wanted to highlight here. Now, we read the staff analysis, spread of the packet, just wanted to key on a few things. There were two elements, and again, staff extremely full, very, very full. So concerns around the riparian buffers, stormwater requirements, and the other concern is around base zoning. What I would like to do is, I would like to invite our engineer, Alan Stanton, to talk about the issue of drainage. I invited Alan to join me tonight because he's way more qualified to do it, as well as ultimately, once we're done, if you wanted to ask me questions, that won't happen.
Thank you. My name's Alan Stanton. I am president of Streamline Engineering. We are a civil engineering firm focused on complex water resources, civil engineering projects. I started my career with a few larger firms. One was half-associates, and I was, I was working Valverde probably 60% of the time for a year and a half, two years. So I was one of the main engineers doing the Lewis Creek Drainage Study, Indian Creek Drainage Study. I was there when we were delineating the riparian buffer zones. I delineated all the drainage areas in the city to develop the maps that were produced during that time. I also developed a burning master drainage plan, where we developed all the floodplains for the city, developed all the drainage protection zones, and then also relevant to Valverde. During construction of Johnson Ranch, Forest Ranch, Singing Hills, we were, I was doing the inspections, I was helping out with development reviews. So I know the city, I'm, I live at 281 Valverde, so not quite in the city limits. So I'm familiar with the area, done a lot of work in central Texas, most of our work is actually public work. Just got back from City Burnet, doing substantial damage evaluations, had about 130 structures flood last month, so we were pulling 60-hour weeks doing that. I do grant program development for St. San Antonio, master drainage plan work for Medina County, big flood control projects for them. So this, I don't specialize exactly in development-type work, but we do a lot of drainage work. And I was happy that Samir called us and asked us to assist in the development of this project. And I was a little surprised because it's on the front end of the project, usually this doesn't happen till we're developing detailed construction plans. So with that, we were asked to look at TCEQ compliance. So we identified this project is in the contributing zone of the Edwards offer, which means it is required, the project site is required to do a contributing zone plan. What that means is for every square foot or acre in previous cover that is to be constructed, that there has to be a best management practice put in place, the BMP, that is a water quality feature, to manage the stormwater for the more frequent flows. So think of like your one-inch, or two-inch, or three-inch type rains, all of that water will be captured and treated before being released over 48 hours. So we did that for the sites, and what we came up with is three batch detention facilities with vegetated filter strips. This is just an image of what a typical batch facility is. So imagine it, it's like your detention pond, but the outfall is set a little bit higher, and it's going to be controlled by a mechanical opening that, that releases, releases the water slowly over 48 hours. So that was the first thing that he asked us to evaluate. When developing the site plan, we set the riparian buffers for the sites. As you see, that's the darker blue there, and you can see that they're generally about 90% on the backside of lot, the lots do not touch them, there's a couple, a couple crossings. And then there is one area on the north where there's a landscaping feature adjacent to a road, where we recommended to put something in, like at Hartford Park, they have this nice natural low-impact development channel with some drought-tolerant plants. It always looks pretty good when I go out there, and so that is something that we're thinking of implementing in the area where we would be intruding on the riparian buffer zone. Another thing that we were asked to look at Another thing that we were asked to look at is preliminary no adverse impact drainage analysis. So we delineated all the drainage areas, all the offsite areas, all the offsite from the church, from Volverde Hills, all the onsite, the existing land use, and we compared what would happen if we were to develop the site. And when we developed this analysis, we assumed that there would be an average of half-acre properties. We didn't know what the land use was going to be at the end, so it actually ended up being less impervious cover for the final plan. So we designed this more conservatively. And so this is just some images here depicting the extent of the analysis that was done. Put together a hydrology model that is typically to be submitted for the city of Volverde through their stormwater criteria. And these detention facilities are going to be built in conjunction with the water quality facilities. So the water quality facilities will accept that first few inches and drain that out slowly, and then the bigger storms, there's going to have an outlet that allows the water to be released at the pre-existing conditions, the pre-project conditions. It's just a image of hydrograph, just showing the extent of the analysis. This is the basin that we developed on the southeast of the property. That's going to be done in conjunction with that batch facility. And let's see here, yeah, this is just an, if I can see this. I don't know how to do this little laser, but that southeast portion, you see a lot of blue there, it kind of blends in the floodplain, the riparian buffer zone, but that is the, okay, thanks. So this is the area of a large regional detention facility. Basically, all of this area here, it's kind of hard to tell, but this drainage area is going to drain to here and capture to this batch detention, then detention facility. And then we also have a couple batch facilities up on this, this area. So we assess all site outfalls, everywhere that water's going to drain, either to the north and south, we assess that. Slope analysis, when developing the plan, we understand the importance of maintaining the slopes, and we tried to hold as best as we could to that. So in the red here, it are, your steep slopes greater than twenty-five percent. And there's some areas where, so we, we tried to put these on the back of these properties and also in areas where there's not directly due to the streets where we could. So we tried to follow the contours, follow the topography, and limit the extent of the grading into the steep slopes. This is just a general cross-section. It's kind of hard to see, but the cross-section starts here at the top of the hill, and we just cut all the way through to Volverde Hills, and it's, it's backwards here, so this is the top of the hill, all the way to Volverde Hills. This, the, the light blue gray, that's your existing gray. There's basically a few locations where there's going to be graded. There's this first spot here, where we have this first road, it's kind of hard to see here, but basically, the idea is the first one hundred fifty foot of the lot that fronts the, the roadways, that's going to be graded at a, we're going to make sure that we maintain a maximum of ten percent slope on those grades, and we're going to have walls on the back ends of those locations. So in general, we're going to have about five wall sections over across thirty-five-hundred feet, two thousand to thirty-five-hundred feet, and the typical wall height is going to be four to six foot, and the maximum wall height's going to be about twelve to fifteen And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Mr.
Alan, be available for questions. We're wrapping up. We, we thought, I'm not big on the presentations, long presentations, we thought this is, there was a lot of questions, and we really had a respect when to spend the time to build comprehensive overview, so that we hopefully can answer any questions from the mission as well as from the audience. So in terms of base zoning, what we're requesting is R2/R3 mix, which is what we currently have. It is consistent with the current distribution of R2/R3. So the, the main issue here, the reason why it's funky, because initially it was, okay, let me just skip through this really quick. So this is what it was before, it was a straight line coming down, beautiful straight line. Problem is, with our conceptual and the MDP, we have many lots that are crossing between two zones, and rightfully so, staff was like, what do we do with this? It's not acceptable. So initially, they wanted us to come in and say, you know, we'll do it all R2 instead of keeping it as a mix. Now, obviously, the current mix is something that we wanted to maintain, because the code allows us to do so. So basically, this is in the code, it says, the standards may be based on existing zoning requirements, and, and the standards may be approved if one wanted to change or modify, but we don't see anywhere where it can be requested or updated. So I just, there may be misunderstanding, we're happy to talk more about it, but in terms of being able to operate within the existing zoning requirements, we believe we can do that. Now, there may be a question mark, well, what if these guys get this, all these modifications, and then they go back and they just go back to the original zone? Well, what we are happy to do is to tie the modifications to the MDP, to say you can only get these modifications if you are implementing the MDP. Otherwise, the answer is no. So we can put it in order, just want to, thinking we can get to a medium where we're not losing the original zoning, but we're also not getting compromises that we can potentially misuse. Anyways, we, we'll just put this out there, but we did maintain the, pretty much the same average, there's a one percent difference. We couldn't gain a head round. So now, in terms of, so, okay, the reason again, we just needed to follow the lot lines, that's why you see this. So we needed to follow the outlines, so that we don't have any lots that were overlapping, yet keep the percentage. It was an interesting exercise for engineering. Alright, so in terms of requesting modifications, again, you've, you've all seen those, they're in the application. The ones I wanted to highlight is the fact that we're actually, certain modifications were increasing the setback from thirty feet to one hundred and fifty. And everything else is to be able to allow us to do the one acre lot. And that's basically, oh, okay, so if you'd like me to go over the text dot expansion, the Texas Water Company, the ISD, I'm happy to go over that. If you'd like me, this is additional content, if you prefer that I don't.
I'm interested in the Texas Water Company.
Okay, why don't we just, so first, how does this project link to the overpass expansion that is planned? This is what we, what we have, this is draft, we could not get the final copy yet. So, but we believe this draft to be very, very accurate. So this is basically the property line between the McCarty property and the church. And this is where the commercial starts and ends there, sorry, ends where the R3 goes. So now, let me just look at it a little bit further here. So this is what it looks like. Alright, so now, what we are planning to do, with your permission, is to have account for potential linkage, potential, on our land, between this entrance and this overpass. This will also serve the commercial, whoever's going to do this in the future. But this here will allow for people heading north, not to have to go all the way south around, and people coming from San Antonio, not to have to go all the way up to forty-six to come back. This will be very good also for the neighbors, I think, I think it will be a good thing for us to do. So this is what we will be looking at. By doing so, we'll be taking six feet, but we will still maintain one acre outsides on the side. In terms of the Texas Water Company, we, we believe we design our water plan with the intention of partnering with Texas Water Company. Our approach is for small development, we're not sixteen hundred unit development, or two hundred and twenty-nine. We can provide, we have the total to provide pressure to the whole neighborhood. So our, our value proposition to them, we are not going to consume nearly as much as these big developments are. We are going to place a storage tank at our cost. They've been trying to do something at the store, understanding for a long time, they don't have a budget for it. So allow us to do it, provide us water for two hundred and twenty-nine minutes, and this is the approach we're taking. We have not yet gotten anything firm with the Texas Water Company. So I just wanted to leave it at that. Happy to entertain any questions on this. In terms of the ISD, we reached out to them, this was a suggestion from the town hall. We, shame on us, we didn't think about it. The reason why we didn't think about it, because in the back of our minds, this is going to be a high-end development. We expect homes over a million dollars in, in our sale price. So we thought tax revenues that would come to the ISD, one point seven million versus the number of people that will have children in that development is less likely to cause an issue for the ISD, but we ended up reaching out to them, we haven't heard budget from them yet, so, and we did that immediately after seventeen, so I believe we did it on the eighteen. Alright, so in terms of impact on, on the city's budget, we believe this development will add about five hundred thousand dollars plus to the city's annual progress, back shore. So that's it, happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry, we thought we'd front-load it, make sure everybody has a chance to understand the extent to which we've gone through to seek feedback and to be able to balance this equation. Also, just come back to you with a bunch of answers, hopefully too many questions, and I would just leave it right now for you to ask all your questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for taking the time to bring the presentation together as well. You did cover a lot of imaginary questions. I imagine we're probably going to ask you some of the same things again, just to make sure it's super clear. I also want to thank you for engaging the community and taking the time to understand where we come from as a community and wanting to preserve our whole country views, and I believe I saw in some of your, your presentation as well, the analysis of like our twenty-twenty-five, you know, sunrise plan and where we want to see the city to, to go forward. So thank you so much for that.
The next slides, but I said, you know what, by now, it's desktop, by PowerPoint, no more.
So we appreciate it, thank you. There's a lot of felt, felt when it comes to your console desk where they don't take the time to do that, so thank you very much. So I had a few questions, I know you're, you're requesting PDD in order to kind of realign the zoning line, but there's a lot of modifications to ordinances and things that we have in place with that. Walk me through again, the reasoning as to not, why not to do all R2 if you are already doing a minimum of, of one acre? Because when I was reading through the different setback adjustments, it seemed like you were wanting to keep R2 and R3, but almost adopting the, a lot of the development rules of R3 on top of R2, so can you walk us through that a little bit?
Yeah, of course, honestly, it's a risk mitigation strategy for us. It's important that we do not lose the density in case this project, for some reason, does not, does not become viable, and anything can happen. We all know anything can happen. So in that unlikely event, we just thought it'd be prudent for us to keep the density percentage, we're not claiming more or less, it's like within one percent, honestly, that's the best we can do. So the idea is, PDDs, everything we do is through PDDs. We have not done one project without PDD. We believe PDD gives certainty for the city, for us, for the community as to what's coming. And there's an agreement, there's negotiations at best, it's not being left to last minute upon plating plan for people to know what's going on. So we are absolutely willing to give all the compromises on density, which is what we've done. Our hope is that we, you allow us to mitigate our risks if something was to happen. MDPs expire, right? If we were to lose our base zoning, we would lose our base zoning. So, and we are, I know it's not your problem, we are paying a lot of money for this property. If we were to lose our base zoning, we're dying it with that base zoning. To, to lose it, to lose the baseline, our risk goes to the ocean, in case we're not able to proceed with this. And natural disasters happen, wars happen, economies fail, it's not within our control. Our plan, obviously, we've seen the effort we've been putting into this, our plan is to forge ahead in this project. We believe we will, we do it quick, like we, we have a budget allocated, we're ready to go. So I hope that answers your question.
And are, is your development company the owner of this property? Or when, when did you connect with the owner if you were not the owner?
Yes, so we actually have, have this property under contract with very, with hard money, as we call it, non-refundable money. So we've initiated this process with, with the current owners in December, and basically, we've been caring, so we've even been good to work with. Honestly, they want this project to happen. We even reached out to the McCarty family, and we intend to keep the name, McCarty Ranch, we want to honor the family, to honor the heritage of it. And we wanted to reach out and see, and we actually were able to establish contact and having lunch with them at the petroleum club on Friday. So the gentleman, his name's Joseph, who built the house on top of the hill in ninety-five, his, his father purchased it in nineteen seventy-two, and this all used to be part of the Johnson Ranch, all of it. So then, that basically stayed, they, and then when the father passed away in nineteen ninety-two, he ended up starting the building process ninety-five, that house was up. So we thought, you know, it's only appropriate to preserve the name of the McCarty's and honor them, so I think we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're fitting with the community. I hope you see that, okay? We're not the big builders, we're not, no, we're small, we're, we do only small number projects, now we have like three projects, that's it. This is our biggest, most important priority.
And you're planning to sell lots and the homeowners are bringing their own builder to the property? Are you working with preferred builders? Are you offering, you know, buy lots and then build homes? What's the?
There are, there are many options ahead of us, and honestly, at this point in time, saying let's, we're, we're very realistic people, you know, one step at a time, we're not going to go and start talking to people when we don't even have a project yet. So we do not do vertical. We do not do vertical, so not, not everything. So how the vertical gets done, we've done it in so many different ways. We had, we sold lots finished, where people came in, they built their own homes, they bought their own builders. We had builders come in and buy a whole bunch of lots at the same time. We had one project, one builder, and then bought everything. They liked the area. So how this will turn out is all by in the sky. But we are very lucky, we have, we have time, we have the cash to do it, and we'll wait.
You, you mentioned in your presentation, you know, fences, and I think I saw the previous presentation, you did the top of the rainwater catchment, and some of these things that would be dictated by HOA or some sort of architectural restrictions on the neighborhood. So what is your, let's say, for example, this is so early, a builder does come in and buys the entire property, and they can put their own architectural controls in that are different from the ones you're presenting to us today, what are you going to be using in order to maintain the controls that you're telling us today for the future?
We have very successfully in the past Uh, we have very successfully in the past, uh, contracted. We, we contract very, very well. We put agreements in place that honor every single promise we make. And, uh, every single promise we make here would be carried through. Uh, I'm not saying it lightly. We have precedence in the city. So, uh, we will, whatever we're saying here, we will end up, at the end of the day, our hope is that a lot of the stuff we can put in ordinances, right? So that's the best enforcement possible. So when we say setback a hundred and fifty feet, setback is, you know, in the rear, that's what it is, right? When we say the standard is dry escaping or natural escaping, that is the standard, right? It's, and the ordinance, they can't mess with that. Doesn't matter who's coming later to build it, they have to comply. That's why we like to do everything upfront in the ordinance as much as possible. Certain things we don't have control because it's state law that overrides all of us, right? So, but everything that we can control is in an ordinance, we put it down. Does that answer your question?
So you don't have a contract with Texas Water Supply, yes?
Water Company? We do not, nobody has. Nobody. So what we do have is, uh, is a strategy that we believe we want very well. That's all I can give you. Honestly, it's so much is, uh, out of our control and honestly, that adds tremendous risk to us. Way more than any of you guys.
Out of curiosity, if we realign the zoning, but none of the current requested modifications to our current ordinances happen, is your project still moving forward?
If we align, could you repeat that?
So if we, if we realign that, that R two and R three.
We accept your design.
We accept that.
We redesign.
Yeah.
But none of the modifications to the ordinances. Does that design still work or no?
It, no, uh, the, the variances we're requesting, the nature of this property, uh, it requires, doesn't matter which way you go, you're gonna need variances. I hope this stuff will fit with us. It doesn't matter. Uh, that, that equation is so difficult to run us. And honestly, we went through, I mean, if you look at all studies that we did, to be able to be educated on exactly what we're asking for in our, uh, uh, modifications. Those modifications are custom made for this plan. If we don't build this plan, those modifications don't mean anything. I mean, and again, we can attach those modifications to the MTP. We do not have to say blanket modifications approval, right? Uh, we can even, if you like, if there's a mechanism and maybe Mr. Batts and the team can, can help us out with this. There's a mechanism to say, look, if we don't build this, we'll revert back to original. Done. Uh, we're, we're good with that. If, if you have.
I'm sure something like that could be written to a.
Yeah, and we're happy with that. If, if a hundred percent. Say, you know what, you don't build this, you're not getting anything from us. You take it.
I think the, the hard part for me is the amount of variance requests that are within this. It's, it's hard to go through and do a blanket approval or a blanket denial or blanket approval with conditions because there is so much here. I wish that we could go through variance by variance and.
Let's do it. Well, no, sorry, sorry. Okay, no, let, let me just rephrase. These variances must be considered as one, right? Because we cannot live with three and not the fourth. We can't build, but then maybe.
And then, so that's just your position that every modification listed in here is required? And then you get nine, but not ten, it's not a value two?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. Um.
We have some more questions.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Is this gonna be a gated community or is it? Is it gonna be private, private, private property that drives inside?
We are open. Uh, we have not made a decision. Uh, the community is, I don't know, let us live on it. So if the recommendation, we're, we're not married to the concept. If you want it gated, we can make it gated.
One, one thing that jumped, jumped out at me was the, uh, the right-of-way. Yes, the, uh, the right-of-way decrease and the, what's the ordinance on the? That too, and in the, uh, the street width?
Sixty feet.
So historically, uh, developments that have gotten reduced, um, street widths were required to make those private streets. The city would not accept them.
And that ties in my question, yes. Is this your closing at twenty foot, twenty foot street?
Oh, no.
Forty.
No, forty, forty.
Twenty or sixty.
Fifty or sixty, I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head. The minimum. No, I thought that was the.
Oh, the asphalt from twenty.
Yeah, the asphalt, the asphalt, we fucking.
Yeah, the, the actual asphalt with the twelve inch ribbon curves.
So of course, that's a decision council would end up making, but generally speaking, the city had not accepted streets, uh, with less lower standards, uh, for publicly owned and maintained.
Be interesting to see how the fire and police thought of that.
We are, we're actually a one hundred percent open to private streets. We have real issue with that.
I have a question for the city in regards to placement of water tank on neighboring church properties. While I can have a problem with them having a tank within their own community, that view should not be burdened on the.
So. This document, this PDD process could not authorize that on a different portion. Uh, that would have to be, you could authorize it the one that's proposed in term, but the one that's off-site would be a different standalone issue. Especially as per.
Yes. And, uh, this is all, like, for us presenting you both, we're very transparent. We don't wanna come in and say, oh, we're gonna put it here and then later on, like, oh, you'll change your mind. So it's best to just let you know that these two options are now, yeah, understanding that you can only approve the location of our property. That's the only thing that's at bay.
Understood. Yeah, I think it's just important, at least from my perspective, that if you're developing a slam, that you kind of shoulder the burden of the infrastructure. So you're not putting now to neighbors.
Oh, uh, okay. Sorry. Let me just explain. We would be buying that piece of land.
I, I.
And, and they actually want it.
I'm sure.
They want, they want us to do that and pay for it so that they are able to also benefit from it if they decide to develop. So it's not, I mean, it, it's mutually beneficial. It's not like.
I, I understand your perspective. I'm just, from the citizen's and more burdensome perspective, I would say that this kind of thing creates a nuisance visually and that should be shouldered by the community that's making it necessary.
Well, I mean, if that's your preference.
That's just my preference. I'll speak to the whole county.
Yeah, I mean, look, we are providing options. We're very open to.
Oh, yeah, and you're open, professional, very, uh, presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I'll, I'll tell you something. We have not gone out and designed anything. And now, in an ivory tower, we did not. Hopefully you see this. Uh, and we still pull in, we're still pulling. You know, we thought it's looking much, we don't want this tank on the other property, we want it here. If that's the consensus, that's what people want. We'll put it in our property. We actually reserved the spot for it. And it'll cost us less because we don't have to. It's just that the other property is higher. So that's, that's the reason why.
And the, and the other presentation you gave, it was gonna be ground, low circle. Uh, and now I'm really raised for.
No, no, it's ground level.
Still ground.
Oh, yeah.
But, but it's on a hill.
On a hill.
It's on the hill, yes.
Okay.
Not sea level.
It's not, yeah, it's not, it's not a tower.
It's not a tower. Neither one would get towers.
Neither one would. That, that's the nice thing about, honestly, we, we, we're very lucky that we have the togo to be able to do that. And that is something that, uh, water providers have been struggling with because people don't want a tower, you know, and, uh, they don't have a budget for it. So if you have a developer coming in and saying, look, we're gonna pressurize the neighborhood around us and, you know, we're gonna incur that cost. At least, you know, the cost problem is one of the, everybody, which is, you know, we will, we will account for that. I, I think they'd probably be very happy with it.
Uh, Mr. Bass, um, so I understood that park was supposed to be five continuous acres and designated, um, along a primary, and I don't see that on this plan.
Well, this plan doesn't apply with that. That's one of the modifications you request.
And then you're wanting the riparian to be part of that?
Yes, yes, because, because we're trading, there's a lot of trade-offs happening to be able to make this and one acre lots. Uh, I mean, honestly, if we were to go with a much higher density, we'd be able to cluster and not needing, need as ma, as many. But then we'd be putting water treatment, putting, uh, uh, sorry, we'd be putting sewer treatment. Uh, so a lot of stuff, it's, it's, you know, when I put that equation, honestly, it was very interesting. We got this team together and sit down and say, okay, how do we do it? It was like many, many interesting conversations, I'll tell you that, as you can imagine.
Can, uh, can you speak to the, the require or the request for the front and side setbacks and changes in those? Because I see that they've gone to requesting a minimum of forty feet from the front for all units and multiply that by fifty feet on the side of all four units. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, yeah. So because we're putting such a thing, uh, we have setback. We expect that a lot of it is gonna go sideways, right? So, you know, I'm not gonna lie. So we have, we have a, our standard lot size is a hundred and thirty-five with going deep three twenty-five. We're chopping off a hundred and fifty in the back scene, can't do anything on it, right? So the front part is a hundred and seventy-five. So if you want to pool, like, you know, things like this, you may have to push sideways instead of going deep. Does that make sense?
Can you talk us through the, the benefit again of the hundred and fifty foot rear setback? And I understand the, the beauty of kind of the green belt, but what is the positive benefit to you as the developer for requesting that?
Uh, as a developer? We don't. But we do, I'll tell you, I'll tell you something. What we do have is we are able to live through the promises and what people are asking us, which is to keep as much undisturbed as possible. Although the benefit to us would be the preservation. Uh, the more we preserve, the more, and that would be a natural thing, uh, the more we can keep wildlife, the more we can. It's a chance to get approval is really what would be the benefit to us, if that makes sense to you.
Uh, where would this hard burger, um, looking thing go?
It goes. And this goes back to that, uh, riparian, you know, the variance for riparian, uh, buffer disturbance. One sec here. So this area here is generally your riparian buffer. But we have this landscape feature right in the middle so that we can, uh, have this access point here. And so the idea, this landscape feature right now, as it currently stands, is, uh, on average about ninety to a hundred feet. And so this is the idea of where you'd have a, uh, some sort of covert system from this riparian buffer that ties into a, uh, natural channel feature here. That's like that, uh, hard burger park. So it could be, you know, that's, that's the location.
Okay.
Yes. And, and that's, that's really the sole location we're looking at that. And we'd have the channel there and then another covert pulling water back to the riparian buffer here.
And then the, the thing with the pipe underneath would be down here?
The, so there, there, there'll be a pipe here, a pipe here, uh, a box covert, it'll probably be a box covert, box covert. Uh, a pipe here or a box over there. And then the pond is here where we'll have the batch detention and then the, uh, outfall for the detention facility, which will have pipes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on, uh, what Alan, his engagement. When we, uh, looked at this property, we knew what we were getting into and, uh, we knew it was gonna be very challenging. Uh, we wanted to assess first, is this something we can absorb? We're a small, small group, you know, we're not the big, the big guys. When we're taking a risk, we have to be careful. So, uh, so we thought the best thing to do is to go and hire the best. And the best is generally the people that helped in this project. So, so that's what we sought and, uh, Alan is, was one of, and he goes, I don't work with developers. Said, well, you know what, not your typical developers. We actually wanna understand if this is, if this is gonna be done right? Can we do it right? Can we stand up and make a promise and fulfill it? Uh, are we gonna go out of business because of this project? So we wanted to mitigate for us, for ours, but we also wanted to make sure that we're fully compliant, we're bringing the best team. Mr. Greg Johnson, I'm sure you guys know who he is. Uh, you know, we sought him out to come in and do the assessment. Uh, we worked with, uh, city planners that have experience in different municipalities like just to bring in, uh, cool perspectives, to bring in. I mean, and honestly, like, you know, for, for us, we wanna talk to anybody, just reaching out to everybody. We talked to, uh, to the previous mayor, we talked to, we attempted to talk to many people with the townhouse. Uh, we sat down with staff three times. So we, we just really wanted to reach out and get as much information as possible. And I believe we have a good, good formula. I think we, at the end, what we have, it was the best we could do, honestly. Uh, we came to you like, wow, but here we are. So we're hoping, hoping you see that, we're hoping that you give us the approval, allow us to build a nice community and, you know, I think you will find in us, somebody who's willing to make less because we don't have the overhead to deliver this. Right? And we can make compromise. And we can ask me something and I respond boom on the spot. And my partners would agree, yes, yes.
So I personally, um, don't agree with the two hundred thousand dollar cap on the tree.
I was just gonna ask, how much was that respective tree mitigation in a cost mix? A small lot right here up the road. We just talked about it last month.
Uh, I mean, at full, uh, full mitigation, it would have been somewhere around the order of two hundred and sixty thousand, but.
That acreage there was minimal.
Yeah, it's ten or fourteen, something like that.
So eleven acres in history mitigation cost was well over two hundred thousand dollars.
How much is he gonna pay?
A bridge too far.
How much is he gonna pay?
Well, that, that's a, that quarter we ended up.
Seventy something. I know, council ended up approving a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Hundred and thirty-five.
For eleven acres?
Roughly. Yeah. So while that, that development, my opinions about that are different. Uh, I do have a problem capping two hundred thousand because if you just multiply that, like, major by twenty-four, I mean, we're talking about some major dollars that the city's just throwing in the air. That's a difficult one for me.
Well, I'll tell you, uh, fair enough. Uh, we're small developer, right? That we don't have endless money. We, we work that budget so tight. I mean, there's a reason why we came in at two hundred, not, not at one seventy.
Very burdensome to develop, which is why the KVs of the world come in bulldozed it all, stroked the check.
Yeah.
Which is difficult, uh, from the city's perspective, the city and the residents, but, uh, smaller developers like yourself, uh, these things can be quite expensive.
They will tip, they will tip the equation for us, honestly.
We just have to maintain some consistency here when we're dealing with any development that, uh, we're not just giving everyone.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but there's give and take, right? Like, you know, where we are, we are, we have entitlement for point five acre lots. We go to one acre lots, right? So, uh, there's, it's that equation I was talking about. It's very difficult equation. And as we work our math, it's important, it's vital. Because otherwise, if we can't, if we can't build it, and we're not saying, hey, you know, we need to make money and this is your problem. We're not saying that. We're not throwing the problem on you. I hope you see that. But it's, when, when we had that logo, we said we lived it together. Uh, although, uh, like, you know, and, and I am so sorry this happened. We typically don't do that. Uh, but, you know, the idea was that we're doing it in collaboration with the city, the community, that, you know, we listen to, you listen to us, we work together, we come up with, with a plan that the other guys can't implement. I can assure you, the big boys will not touch that.
Right, it's too much time.
Not with a, with a. I assure you that. So if we're working together and we're, we're all like, saying, hey, we're gonna get here, we're gonna take here. Our sincere hope is that you give us that. Our sincere hope is that you give us that consideration because it will give us, like, you know, trust me, it's a rule. Because we're operating, and I know it's not your problem, I, I get it, so operating super, super smooth on this.
Understood.
I'm just being transparent.
Sure, no, I get it. It's, there's a lot of things that we're really reaching on if we were to reach for one of these items. But more than five, whether they're eight or nine requests, that's very difficult for us to say, have it all. You understand?
Well, what you're getting is, you're getting one acre lot development that hopefully will fit. It's a challenging property, but somebody will wait and develop thirty-foot lots on it. And it should be very worth it for them, trust me. You know, like, and, and one day, like, you know, we know, we know a few things. What we know is that bill fifteen that just came out is strict to like the big municipalities, you know, over a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, you know, counties that are over three hundred. But the people who lobbied for that, they started lobbying about this eight years ago. And they got it. And now what they're saying is too late. Because a lot of these properties inside settlements are now gone and they're pushing out. And now they're lobbying for the five miles out, right? So, and that's gonna happen, you know, ultimately. Because there, there's no room beside, besides settlements, there really isn't. I mean, when we find an, an acre property, like, inside the sixteen oh four loop, we're like on it, everybody's competing. Right? So it's pushing out and the state is promoting, promote, promote, promote. They invested in two eighty-one, widened it, put a lot of money into it for a reason. Why would they do it? Right? I mean, they did it because they had a plan. And unfortunately, you know, people get caught up in that plan, right? So, but ultimately, certain corridors heading west, deep Medina, all of that, you're gonna see a lot of, I mean, it's I thirty-five. Uh, it's highly like, I'm not, I'm just speculating, but, you know, it's a small community. Even though we're small, we get invited to a lot of stuff and we, we know a lot of the big boys. So at the end of the day, I can assure you changes will come. If it's not tomorrow, it's gonna come five years from now. And.
We, we understand that. We're all well aware of that.
So my, yeah, so my hope, my hope is that we, we can work together. It sounds like a lot of compromises, but so are we, we're getting a lot of compromises too. It's, and that's when I say, like, you know, it's a partnership. We mean it, because we cannot get it done without you guys. And ultimately, you know, we don't know where this is going when it comes to, you know, the big boys being able to do the sixteen hundred units. I mean, it's happening.
Yeah.
All right, good. Uh, so the, the easement in the back, a hundred and fifty, can that be just a conservation easement? Because I know that people would go back to that back thing and start cutting back there. Even though it's supposed to be a dedicated.
Are you talking about, are you talking about?
I'm talking about that.
Just the edge, you know?
Yes, bend up and around. And it would be nice if the people that are gonna be backed up against maybe a apartment complex and also the commercial, like, they had some wild space too, and that would look better from two eighty-one.
You're talking about potentially a conservation easement?
Just.
Somewhere they didn't touch?
So that they can't touch it.
That would still leave, it's inside this private property lot.
Yes.
Yeah. So how do you deal with state law that says that a municipality cannot restrict somebody from cutting trees on their property?
So if such an easement has to be given to the HOA, enforced by them, we wouldn't be able to enforce it.
Correct, but even the HOA cannot.
In that case, we may not base lawsuits.
That, that's, that's state law. State law says not the HOA, not municipality, not a builder, not anybody. Once you own your property, you can do whatever you want with those trees. And I cannot revert that, right? This is not within, none of us here can change that.
Yeah.
It's state law.
And when you say no fences, is that only along between, between Bullberry Hills and, or is it between the lots?
Between the lots.
Okay.
Between the lots.
Fully permitted backyard, so it's just not fully fenced, is what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, no fence, we don't want to, because we, yeah, we wanna allow the wildlife to move, right? So otherwise, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Divis to Canadian.
Divis to Canadian.
Yeah, unusual.
Yeah.
Based on what you just said about property ownership, uh, what do they wanna put a fence up in the owner's property? Let's keep it up.
Well, that is something.
Right, he said specifically the tree law they passed a few years ago, uh, removing cities and apparently HOA is for to regulate trees after a owner occupied single family home is on a block.
Yeah, I was surprised that the HOA, because we were thinking, push it down the HOA, we were totally thinking. And then uh, one of our attorneys is like, no, no, no.
So you're gonna do your roads and then the front of each lot, you're gonna like, cut down everything in like the first one hundred and thirty-five feet? Is that what I'm understanding?
All right.
Where the house is gonna be?
Yes, yeah, that's where, so going back to this. See if I can get real quick.
So you wouldn't just do that per lot?
No, it's, so it's a section. So, so basically, I'm gonna just follow here, this area, this is the top of the hill. So approximately, just also going back to that water tank, that's gonna be about right, sorry, right here, about thirteen oh nine. The top of the hill is about thirteen fifty. It's gonna be about right here, about this thirteen oh nine. All of this untouched, then a wall, and then our ten percent slope road, ten percent slope for that first um, one thirty-five, one fifty. I'm forgetting the number in the application, and another wall. All of this untouched. That's, this is trees, that buffer area, see on the land plan. Another wall, ten percent, street, ten percent, that's the, the front side of the lots, every time you see that ten percent drop. Riparian buffer is like right here, we're exceeding all of that, all of this is untouched, untouched, untouched. And then here. So, so basically, whenever you see in the front of the lot, you see a road, that's gonna be, those are your grading areas. And so.
So some will be four feet and some will be twelve feet?
Uh, correct. There'll be, in this cross-section, in this cross-section here, that's from the top of the hill, just going southwest uh, towards Bullberry Hills, that crosses all of these, every section of lots and roads. Uh, we have two twelve-foot walls and the rest are four to six feet. So there's five walls, uh, and uh, two are twelve-foot. And this was in the steeper section.
Oh.
So that was, that was the uh, it's gonna be typically about that four to six-foot range, and then there's gonna be a couple of sections where it's, it's rather steep. And uh, you know, as for, um, you know, the view, again, we're, top of that hill is thirteen fifty. And, you know, our, this is our, our location, our sets of, our sets of walls, where our first wall is set at that about thirteen uh, fifteen, thirteen twenty. That's, that's the deal there. But, I mean, as you can see in this section here, you know, the riparian buffer, we're, the, we have, we have that riparian buffer that's shown on the, uh, you know, to the, the lots to the edge of the riparian buffer. Generally, the one hundred fifty feet outside of the riparian buffer isn't going to be graded with this plan. So the riparian buffer, whenever you're, you're hearing eight different variances, and we show that ninety percent of the riparian buffers aren't gonna be touched. We're actually, there's gonna be riparian buffers plus three hundred feet on either side. And so as for, you know, going, talking about the parklands, it's gonna be more like a natural setting with uh, you know, a potential for trails o- option along the riparian buffer zone. That's, that's the idea. Yeah.
So that three hundred foot will be in somebody's backyard, basically?
Yes.
So they can mow up to the riparian buffer? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in those areas, as for mowing, there's, there's a, there's a lot of trees. So all those trees are gonna be preserved. So that, that riparian buffer, you know, there's tons of trees and you can see, kinda, we took the aerial. See here, go back, all the way back to the original plant right here. I mean, you can see, we, we tried to highlight the areas where, uh, just looking at the aerial, where you see the tree canopy. So all of these sections on the back of the lots, so that line that we were showing you, that's basically this line right here. That's this line right here. That's our thirteen fifty, this is approximately the water storage tank. We're gonna have that, that wall here, wall here, and then no grading all the way through until we get to the front of these lots right here. We're gonna grade, grade, no grading right here, all the way through, and then grade here, grade, grade, and then no grading. So even this buffer here, oh, actually, I'm sorry, we have this road right here, we're gonna, we're gonna maintain that buffer, but there is gonna be some slight grading right here.
Hmm.
Um, that's the deal.
And then how many majestic trees do you think are in the roadways?
I don't have that answer.
Because there's no trees or ways, so.
Super expensive at this point where he's at. It doesn't, it's allowed, it doesn't make sense. It would be astronomical money to not have an approved plan and then invest in a tree survey. Typically, you won't see that till.
Sure, it's the individual.
That, that plating time.
Yeah.
Uh, and that is why actually we're, we're crossing variants on the extent of the survey. Thank you for that. So basically, we would only survey the areas that we would grade. But, but it's interesting because there's an assumption that people are gonna buy a property like this and just mow all the trees.
It happens a lot.
I hope to God that's not, like, you know, if somebody's buying a one acre lot, one would think that, you know, and they're buying it in, it's like a verity. One would think, I, I, I'm speculating.
Cross two eighty-one.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair enough. But like, our hope is that, you know, as, as we built uh, certain uh, regurglements and the ordinance, uh, that people would, it'd be discouraging for people to do that. I, I, I find it quite disturbing, people would actually buy a one acre lot and just mow it. Uh, I don't, anyways, so, you show on.
Those are the first, uh, what do we name, like, public comment? All right, so we're gonna go ahead and start public comment?
Yes, please.
So before we do that, I just wanna remind everyone again that uh, you're limited to three minutes. Uh, and also, unfortunately, we cannot uh, converse back with you, we can only speak to matters of fact. So more than likely, you're gonna hear a thank you from us and we'll, we're listening and taking it all in. So we have our list here, uh, we're opening public comment at seven thirty-eight. Um, first on the list, oh, and then also I wanna say as well, when you come to state, please state um, your address as well as your name. So we understand where you're from. Um, David Ronquillo.
That's right. Good evening, my name is David Ronquillo, I live at three seven 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 Larry Drive in Bullverde, that's Johnson Ranch. As you saw in that email, it's the low scale Johnson Ranch. The foundational principle of any government is the protection of the people's rights and safety. The city of Bullverde enacted various ordinances to govern the development of land, primarily for the protection of its residents, not for the profit of developers. The One Stop Group is asking for a significant number of variances. I wish to address tree preservation, and I will tell you, I am not a tree hugger. The property to be, to be developed is covered with trees. Ordinance ten A dash four point zero seven establishes several regulations for the protection of trees within the city and ETJ, specifically four point oh seven A six is to prevent the clearcutting of land. Under tree removal and mitigation requirements on the application, the developer is asking to modify to allow the removal of majestic trees within areas to be graded. Current ordinance is required a tree removal permit and authorization for each majestic tree to be removed for any reason. Majestic tree is three feet in diameter, and oak tree, three feet in diameter, is approximately one hundred and forty-four years old. Why was this specific aspect of the tree preservation ordinance put in place? One can assume to prevent unbridled clearcutting of old oak trees. Why does a developer want a modification? One can assume to clearcut any old oak trees that stand in the way of his profit margin. Four point zero seven F I five requires a tree survey to locate protected specimens, majestic and historic trees. Subsection I two requires a separate permit for each majestic tree to be removed. It appears the developer does not wanna do this. Additionally, developer is requesting the city to limit any payment to the city of two hundred thousand dollars regardless of the total replacement count per inches required to be mitigated. How the developer arrive at this number? And is two hundred thousand dollars adequate to complete a tree survey to identify which trees will be removed? I have addressed only one small aspect of the developer's application. The developer has requested numerous modifications to the city's ordinance, yet has provided no surveys or studies other than a soil evaluation report. I would urge the commission to request more detailed studies with respect to the trees on the property, as well as water drainage. We in Johnson Ranch do not, do not wanna be inundated with runoff from this development. As we're seeing in Johnson Ranch, the potential remains that when a developer walks away, any problems they did not adequately address would be left to the city and the residents to deal with. Respect the request of this application not be forwarded to city council until forward, further studies and surveys are completed to your satisfaction. Thank you.
Mr. Sitz?
Again, our, our chances is possible under that you could pull up page five from the agenda, there's the diagram on there, it's what I wish to refer to. That's the, the one that's got all of that on it. It's page five of the, of, uh, actually, it's page twenty-two or something of this. Yes, that, exactly. One thing that I did not understand from the presenters was this continued reference to R two and R three. The county's OSSF ordinance only allows onsite septic systems on properties that are one acre in size or more. In addition, section two point zero seven of the city's ordinance uh, states that onsite septic systems must comply with both the city's ordinance and the county's ordinance. Mr. Ronquillo has already dealt with the tree issue, but I object to the tree provisions as well. The developer states an intent to plant two trees per lot. I infer from that desire that he intends to grade the entire lot and then plant two trees. One thing we do not need here is another development that has both the appearance characteristics and the drainage characteristics of Edgbrook, and all of you have seen that. The developer pro- proposes modifications to the cut and fill requirements, as well as restrictions on disturbances of sleep, steep slopes. According to the city ordinances, the purpose of this article is to limit disturbance in areas with steeply sloping terrain to protect watersheds, prevent flooding and limit soil loss and erosion, degradation of surface water, and the destruction of natural resources and topography of the city and ETJ. Exhibit K from the agenda states that no area of the properties included in FEMA flood zone A. What that exhibit does not show you, if you refer to the big screen, is this is tributary number twenty of Sybalo Creek. This is tributary number twenty-three. This hatched area that you see right here is in fact the start of a one hundred year FEMA flood plain. In addition, the only reason that that flood plain does not start up higher here is that there is no impervious cover up there. That flood plain flows south under two eighty-one, as shown in this diagram. What's not shown in that diagram is that that flood plain continues to the east between Johnson Ranch Elementary and the fire station, and then south across uh, eighteen sixty-three. During the July flooding and in several other instances before that, the fire station number three up there has found it necessary to move all of their equipment uh, up higher in that vision. What's the name of that street?
I say it's Vista.
Yeah, Mustang Vista, because they can't get their equipment out of the fire station when there's flooding on. As impressed as I am by Mr. Stanton's drainage analysis, I don't believe it. Thank you.
Ryan Welly? Well, I'm sorry.
So honestly, I'm just gonna, I'm just speaking from the heart. I might quote a bunch of things throughout the ordinances. I live in Bolverde since two thousand and three. Been here quite a while, making up as long as others. Um, my property goes back up to the ranch. My fence is back up to the ranch. I'm just kind of wondering why it was never notified at any other meeting. I don't know how. I read the front quarter every month. I drive by this place daily. I live in Bolverde. I'm sorry, I live on uh three one eight two one Lakefront, by the way. Um, I've uh, I'm just kind of shocked. I'm a little upset with myself right now, but I wasn't invited to the town hall meeting because I really would have liked to have been in that. I have a lot of questions for that developer, but, I mean, being back up to their ranch, I'm not, I'm gonna, you know, um, I mean, there's a lot of things that he went through that. I mean, I can tell you right away, it's like, no, nobody wants to, right? But he, there is a point where, yeah, there is growth gonna happen, right? The growth is gonna happen. I've seen it. It's already, it's already happened. I mean, you know, I mean, there's a lot of things I could stand up here and tell you, all the negative things, but everything's gonna happen. I'll show you my picture. I'm probably that water sitting at thirteen hundred feet. My property is about twelve hundred and fifty feet. When I look in the back porch every night, that's what I see. I see the whole property back there. So, um, you know, I mean, I've got all kinds of questions. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't think I'm gonna have enough time, but all the survey and the need to be done to make sure all the masts are withheld. Uh, that buffer that he talks about, I, I don't really believe that that would back up to me. I'm not too sure how, once, once they own it, how are they gonna hold the buffer? Um, I'm still a little irritated about not being, I did get this notice. I don't know how many people back up, they got this notice. I got this notice. I wish maybe moving forward, maybe the residents could have a different kind of notice of the town hall meetings or something. I don't know how that was, I don't know how people were notified.
And I'll just point out that that was done by the developer. It wasn't a city process.
Okay, well, so then right away, like, I mean, I didn't get that, no, I don't know why. I got this. You see, I mean, I, I am, I did get this. Um, so other than that, I mean, without going through it, I mean, I, you know, without getting into all the, all the tree permits and all that stuff, obviously, not a property owner. I mean, I'm not, I I do like that you're not dumping, I'll, I'll tell you one good thing, you're not dumping any traffic into the rest of Bolverde, okay? That's some things I like. They're, it's staying out on two eighty-one. It's gonna happen. Somebody's gonna buy, develop that land. Anyway, so, I mean, I got three seconds. Just a little shaky, I'm sorry, but it's just a little, you know, I hear about all these other fishing plans, just a little shaky, but. I'm not opposed to.
Thank you. Cheryl Short?
My name is Cheryl Short. I live at three zero eight six zero Schmader Lane in Johnson Ranch, that, whatever he called it. And Lindy stole half of my thunder as he went through his presentation. So things have somewhat changed, but I am the president of the Johnson Ranch Mud. I have spent the last three weeks with the mud engineer and our maintenance crew going through and looking at all of the issues we're gonna have to address because of the January, of the July fifth rain. I am very concerned because, as Lindy pointed out, we do have those tributaries that come across. They go right next to the fire station and between the elementary school. It was so high, it almost pressed at that tributary, and fire station wall was right there. There's a bridge that goes across Johnson Way. It was barely underneath the bridge. So if we have additional water coming in that direction, we are going to have some problems, and as we've already said, that's the EMS station. They aren't able to get out. If the bridge washes out or has an issue with it, what's, how long is it gonna take to repair that? Um, look, I'm skipping through some of this since it's already been addressed. I do have a video. I've, I've been collecting videos from the entire neighborhood, but one of them is of that tributary, so if you want to see it, I can send it to somebody, and you can get a picture of it. The other issue is Mustang Vista. Water from that side comes under two eighty-one, goes into the Mustang Vista, goes across that street, and there's a detention pond at the end. So we're concerned about the amount of water that is going to be put into our neighborhood from this. And when they talk about building a detention, it sounded really nice that they can control the flow, but they build for a one hundred year flood. We have had how many floods that have been over a one hundred year flood in the last ten years? So I'm not sure that that's really going to protect us by, by much. And that is all I have, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Prescott?
My name is Seth Prescott. I live at two nine one Windmill Ranch Road uh in Windmill Ranch here in Bolverde. Um, having sat up there for three years, I appreciate the struggle that you guys have, having to think through all of the different variances requested. But as I reflect on my time on the committee, I recall that that's our job is to actually look at these things and to weigh them. And as the developer put it, uh, it is almost impossible to build with the variances that we have. And he's also right, and several other people said that someone is gonna buy that property and build lots. And they may not care how they do it, as long as they can make the most money possible. Doesn't seem like this guy. I'm, I don't know him. First time I've uh seen or heard him is tonight, and I certainly have no financial interest in this development. And so uh my only thought is that the enemy of the good is the best. And so I understand you guys are faced with giving a lot of different variances, but that pop, that property would almost be impossible to build without the variances that he's requested, it seems to me. Uh, I do have a question for the developer. Um, so I've had experience with second water company personally, and so I'm just wondering what happens if they won't give you water? Yeah. So uh right now, I'm more toward on even talking to anyone until the end of twenty twenty-six, which I personally think is just a money grab, because they are, uh, they, their water availability report said that they had twenty odd years of water in twenty twenty-two, and now they're saying that they have none. Um, so I think it's a bunch of BS, honestly. And they have raised their O U E rates from two thousand one hundred to eighteen thousand twenty-five um for people now applying. So I think it's a complete money grab. Not saying that there's not uh low water or less water than there was in the lake. Thank God it's come back up. But uh at the end of the day, um, I think a California company that purchased Danny Lake Water Supply and is now purchasing a Houston company is out for the money, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Ryan Tucker?
Good evening, uh, Ryan Tucker. My wife and I uh live at two nine three six Barton Hill. On the map, where the property probably most impacted by the superior water tower that the developer intends to put on the map, on the pie shape as well. Uh, gentlemen, before I mentioned notice, I sent an email uh to the commission, and I, I believe that pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, I don't think you can make a decision tonight. I think you have to punt on this because um several of my neighbors on Barton Hill at Lakefront have no idea that we're even here today. And they're neighbors that are gonna be directly impacted. We all know what's gonna happen with that St. Paul property if the developer gets hold of it. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out, and I think they should have a say here. If they're not here, and pursuant to local government code, I object to um anything other than punting this to next month. Uh, I recognize that uh it's not two hundred feet. There's the St. Paul property in the middle, but again, we've talked about through several exhibits, that particular water tower, so I wanted to raise that objection and not waving it. The second thing is, the developer brought up that picture. And for those that are wondering about that picture of cynical trails, I'm the one that took that picture. I drove over there, and if you pull out your phones right now and look at Google Maps, type in six five one eight Samaritan Drive, and look for satellite image, and you tell me whether there's trees on that property or whiteout. If they're not trees, then I'm full of crap. If they are trees, and someone else in this room is full of crap. And I think truth, I think veracity matters. The comment was made. Every single promise we make will be followed through. We're very transparent. If you do a simple Google search about them, there's other things you will find. I'm happy to provide them to this committee. In addition to the tree concerns, uh, there's just a litany of variances here. I don't have the time, obviously, to go through them, but we object to the cutting and filling beyond four feet, uh, the nonsense with adjusted trees and cap mitigation costs of two hundred thousand. Leon Valley, you know, fell for that crap. But we're Bolverde. We're different. Do we want our hill to look like that? I've got the picture. My wife won't hand it to you. If you want a bald hill, if that's what Bolverde wants to look like, then go ahead and look and prove this. I moved out here for a reason. I got away from the city for a reason. And I sure as heck didn't come to Bolverde to see a bunch of trap homes in my backyard or a water tower. I ask that you delay it and then deny it.
Ms. Chapman?
Would you pull up that slide that we, we had referenced?
No.
Thank you so much.
Sure, you want us to?
Do you want to take a look at what it is?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yvonne Chapman, three zero eight zero nine Summer Drive here in Bolverde. Um, thank you all for your thoughtful consideration of this, and um I appreciate having that very thoughtful positive plan for development. And I'd say that the extent of the number, of the extent of variances requested makes me wonder if this is the property that maybe shouldn't be developed. I appreciate Alan, I've got my husband, and the work you did um ten years ago. Have any of our drainage maps been updated in the last nine or ten years?
The maps themselves have not been, although the rainfall.
Some of the rainfall totals have been addressed, okay. Um, I want to hone in and support what um Mr. Sitz was speaking about regarding the tributaries on this ranch, and you will see that they come into the beginning of hundred year floodplain. And as he said, it crosses under two eighty-one. If you will flip the page, first page, the second picture is from the July fifth. That is a screenshot from that video that's behind our fire station. That's where these tributaries, these two combine and go under highway two eighty-one. At some point, we're going to have to consider the regional effects of uh drainage mitigation, uh, variances, I mean, being granted to our drainage ordinance. We have to consider the regional effects. There are people who are being affected that weren't even discussed in this presentation east of two eighty-one. And then as everything is draining into the Sybalo Creek and Lewis Creek does the same, what about the backwash and concerns there? So this is not, this is not an isolated one little piece of property here. There are a lot of people who have been harmed. The third page that you see that photo is Larry Drive, and that is the road on which Mr. Ronquillo, Mr. and Mrs. Ronquillo live. That was July fifth. That was about three and a half inches of rain on July the fifth. So, and this is before any development. Now, so y'all don't get any of this, and that wasn't referenced by um the engineer, and truly, he's got, they have an exceptional reputation. Um, so I'm not challenging that. I'm saying the way our ordinances are drafted in state law is, I suppose, they don't have to consider, but you have the ability to say no to the variances. Thank you.
Mason Brand? Um, Melissa Koski?
Um, my husband and myself live at three one five six 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 Bolverde Hills Drive. Um, I want to thank the rest of you for kind of uh going over the more technical issues that I really don't understand. But I am very concerned about the drainage and what's going on, and I did not know about this problem with fire department. But if, you know, it starts to flood, they've gotta move the equipment. This is insane. I mean, why do we put up with that? I mean, how many more issues are we gonna have? But I'm gonna tell you, from the first, when I got this letter to invite us to the town hall meeting, which I thought was very nice for the developer to do that. It wasn't a city, you know, sponsored thing. It was, okay, meet us, and we're gonna tell you what's going on. But anybody that got it, there's no return address. There's no location of their business. There's no phone number to contact them. There was an email address, and it said, use this email address if you want RSVP to get a chair for the town hall meeting. That was it. Try to figure out who they are. When the meeting started that night, Samir, very nice gentleman, but he introduces himself, and he introduces his company. And he says, you can't really find us. Go out on the internet. Look for Trimark. Look for One Stop. Look for, you can't really find us. And that's by design. And I, I thought, what are we doing here? Who do we trust? I, I don't care what's on that paper. I don't care what's on the drawings. I don't care what you say every day. You're, you're not being forthright. Put it out there honestly, and tell us who you are, what you're doing. Somebody asked, where can I go see your developments? Oh, you gotta go to Canada. You didn't want to tell anybody. You could go over to Leon Bass, okay? So there's plenty of develops here, developments here. Anyways, my point is, I'm, I'm worried about the water. We live towards the top of Bolverde Hills Drive. And what happens every summer, we have owned this house for ten years. Every summer, August and September, the water drops, the water level drops. I can't take a shower. Once school starts, all the kids, people are taking showers in the morning. If we don't take a shower at six o'clock in the morning, I'm done till about ten, eleven o'clock. He talked about the water towers going in, and the plan is the water towels will, water towers will recharge during the night, and then they'll have enough water for the new development. I'm sorry, that's my water, because I know in August and September, other than luckily this year, I have to get up at five thirty, six o'clock to take a shower because our water trickles out of the shower. We have a two-story house, and it's, it's an event. You know, there's, there's so many issues here, you know, the, the, you wanna do all the time. Thank you for listening.
Mark Koski?
I'm the proud husband of that furious lady. Uh, you know, we came out here in two thousand and seven, and uh I came here by pure accident. I missed a flight going home. I came out for a convention at Lockton Terra, and with all the structure going on before ten around the airport stuff, we missed our flight going home. And my wife at the time was in the real estate mortgage part of the business, and said, well, let's go by the store, pick up a thing, drive around. The very first place we've gone around, here. We drive up two eighty-one. We come out to Bolverde Hills Drive, hang a ride. And I am, I'm emotional because I love this town. We're driving up the hill. Everybody's waving, wavy. How come my, why they waving to us? Maybe they think it's somebody in the neighborhood. No, it's the neighbor. Get to the top of the hill. We see the home we live in now called the barn house, the red brick house up at Bolverde Drive. Check it out. It's actually for sale. We look at it. No, it's kind of cool. Go back home to California. Come back, we have a rented place in Stoneos. And uh, three other times the house was for sale. The third time we go to that house, it's for sale again. She goes, I don't want to go see that house. I don't want to see it. No, I want to see it's for sale again. She walks in the door, looks around this for a second. It hasn't changed in 10 fricking years. Hisses me on the shoulder and says, I'm going to buy this damn house. That's why you come to Bouverie. And just like she said, there are so many things here that are being hidden from all us residents that we don't know. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are asking questions that are important because I come from California. I know what it's like to get screwed in the city, okay? I know what it's like. This, this doesn't happen here. I belong to a real good church. I love my community. I love my neighbors. You know, and that's what we have here in neighborhood. And when someone comes in and says, well, we can't do this, or take it or leave. You don't give me these 10 things. You don't get, know what? Pack your stuff, walk out the door and go away. I don't want you here. This is called negotiations. Negotiations is a strong army. Negotiations, talking, having communication, negotiation, back and forth, and saying, hey, this is what I believe in. They tell me, oh, I can't do this or I can't do that because that we're a small company. No, you're not a small company. You've got lots of money. You got people who have fifty-two subway franchises. Yeah, you've got money behind you. Don't tell me you don't have money. But don't think we're stupid here. We're not stupid. Fond folks. We're smart people. Okay? And if you're gonna say you're gonna tell somebody that I'm gonna make these million dollar lots because I'll get million dollar homes. That's fantastic. Maybe you can put an August Springs up there. I don't think you can. So that's not what Bouverie is about. Bouverie is about the community. And I have loved this town. It was a pity. And I thank you all for these habits here.
Mike Romans.
Thank you. Mike Romans, of the thirty-one, four, thirty-eight, Bouverie Hills Drive. I've got one of the largest lots combinations you're going to find on that west side, uh, west of this property. Uh, we built in two thousand and I joined planning and zoning at a very early age. Actually, I, I wrote all the incorporation beats and bounds on the lands survey of the very bulk of the state. I joined planning and zoning because of this tract. And there was an MDP, it was actually outside the city limits at that time. There was an MDP that had been submitted and approved. Back when we had bought the property, it had been submitted to the county. And uh, I figured development was going to take place within months. I moved in. Well, fast forward to twenty-five years later. This uh, MDP plan uh, is frankly as good as we're going to get. We are losing our rights to the state. State is taking the city's rights to, to uh, regulate properties, especially in ETJ. Luckily, this is at the city limits now. Uh, the MDP in twenty seventeen, I was the chairman of planning and zoning at the time. And uh, it was a good plan. This plan is slightly better than that plan. Uh, has some concerns. I believe a conservation easement can work, really like trees along there. The state is saying that you can't, as a city, come in on property that's not already restricted and put new restrictions on it, where you can't take trees down. But if a person buys a lot with a hundred fifty-foot conservation in the back of it, that's common law. Anybody can enforce that. Anybody can come out and come and suit in if they go and take some trees down. You can't, you can't get something that you didn't buy. So if the, the property is restricted, that hundred and fifty feet in the back, if it's restricted by clap and it's clearly restricted, but they can't take trees down, they can't take the trees down. The state can't tell them that they can't because that's common law. Okay? Uh, you can't get something that you didn't buy. You didn't buy the right to do that, you don't suddenly get it. The state telling them that you can. On a personal note, there's a game fence along the back of the property between McCarty Ranch and lots in Bouverie Hills. It's a beautiful fence. They spent a fortune on it. I would like them to keep that fence. I haven't talked to anybody that's in favor of picking that fence down. I'd like them to please conserve that fence. It is on the ranch property. It'd be their right to do it, but it'd be a stupid, stupid waste of money. We need to have underground power in this subdivision. We don't want to look at power lines. And a forty-foot roadway with a twenty-foot paving section, you don't have room for ditches. There're going to have to be an easement outside that roadway for ditches. Thank you.
Okay, that is it for public comments. It is closing at eight, ten. For us to discuss amongst ourselves, um. For me, my position, I felt there was too many variances that were left open ended. There wasn't enough detail on exactly what they were asking for, which makes me extremely nervous. Um, I would much rather see later on an MDP with some of those variance requests with more detailed information of what they're actually asking for. That's just my personal opinion.
So what I'll say to that in speaking to his position, um, in order to come up with all of those answers, and in a scenario like this, it's extremely expensive. He doesn't own the property. He's looking at the viability of this project. The people who can afford to do that, it's going to be KBL. It's going to be these types of builders on postage stamp lots and we're going to get all the money for our trees. We're going to get everything we don't want in Bouverie. However, it's also very difficult to give so much, uh, uh, as much as they've requested and as he said before, you know, if we could only get three of these things done and the rest, we can't, well, this project doesn't move forward. I'm sensitive to both sides of this, however. I do have a hard time getting past the the abundance of requests to our money. These are rules, so.
The all or nothing thing to.
It's difficult, yes.
And I feel that the R two is, I don't want for three. For me, it needs to be all R two. And then um.
But I don't, I don't think we have the.
Yeah.
We don't have the ability to restrict that, sorry, so.
No, 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 we, we absolutely can't.
We can't. All we have.
That's if they would, if they would.
No, they don't.
Requesting it, right?
They don't have to request it. No, the city can zone the property however we see fit. Uh, there's no vesting on this property. So you could zone it all R two, um. The city could initiate a zoning regardless of, well, outside this process and zone it R two. So no, you're, you're not restricted in that regard.
This isn't set, so we presented these with a.
No.
Like as divided on.
No, I mean, that's the current zoning. City can change the zoning at any time. We have to respect any vested rights that may exist, but I'm not aware of any at this time.
I also have a trouble with the trees, um, the, the majestic trees and trees in general and the $200,000. And uh, the cut and fill and the flooding are all problems.
So.
Are there approval or denial?
Yeah, I mean, I, I believe when you mentioned, you know, it was kind of an all or nothing thing, um, it only really gives us the option for approval or denial. And at this point in time, I'm seeing it only going forward as, as denial. And I, I agree with you being sensitive to both sides. I, I really am also. But I think there is a lot of the requests that are on here that are too open-ended and it feels too much of a just trust, just trust us and this is what we're going to do and move forward. And, but I also understand it also is very extensive. If there was a way that we could break these out a little bit more and, or if there's more that you could look at to see if there is some other viability or some more conversation we can have rather than the all or nothing when it comes to these variances. I think we all really want to have that conversation.
I feel like all the city's getting is the lower rent fee and then everything else is favors the development, the development. It's the only, the only thing the city's. And he's running his numbers. That's what he's got to get to, right, to make the whole thing work.
So my understanding that Texas Water's place on giving anybody a new contract until the end of two thousand and twenty-six. So can you hang on for that long and then maybe you're not going to get it? You know what I'm saying?
Is he able at this point to have more?
It's up to the chairman or the board if they want to reveal the chairman's decision.
I'm willing to do that, yeah.
All right, so uh, would you like me to address any of the comments that were made?
I think just.
Just, just the one, just the one comment. Uh, so in terms of uh, what you're asking for, you're saying it, it's too extensive and, and we get it. And are we able to sit down and talk about it? If there's a form for us to be able to do that. Uh, I think we have in previous municipalities that we've dealt with. There was informal meetings. There were informal, we're honestly flying blind, just so you know. Again, we have, we had a few meetings that were very constructive. But uh, we are flying blind. We were just here, like, you know, listening for the first time to some of these concerns. As far as we're concerned, we're, we're happy to sit down and talk. Uh, and if you believe the site can be tabled for the next uh, planning and zoning, allowing us a chance to have a conversation. Uh, we, we're happy to do that as long as you're able to provide a mechanism for that. Right? So if you, if you all are willing to say, hey, you know what, we will provide you a mechanism for feedback, maybe a meeting. It happens, it happens all the time when people actually sit down and meet and talk. No, but it's true. That's, you know, it's true. I mean, that's, that's how things get done. And if there's Chinese wall between the developers and city officials, uh, honestly, it's going to be like public forum where people trying to like doing this and the people getting personal about stuff and and yeah, you know what, uh, we are a little bit careful, honestly, for those reasons why our names and, and home addresses and, and all of that are published. Uh, because there are people, we have received threats in the past. So, so, so anyway, so as far, as far as.
It was a little keyless question on whether.
We're happy to, yeah, we're happy to, well, no, the twenty-sixth, uh, we believe, we will not be paying for waiting on two twenty-sixths. Yeah, I mean, if you tell us now, lucky what, you guys, good try, see you later. We, we will, we will dodge. Honestly, like, you know, we have, we're happy to move on. There are lots of other projects that we will do. We believe in this project. We honestly do. Like, you know, I'm, I'm not playing games. Uh, you know, what, you tell us that we're not interested, get out of here, we will. Uh, if you want to talk, we're happy to talk.
Thank you.
So, yeah, absolutely.
I would like to have that conversation more so, I mean, to the point of um, Mr. Romans' point of, you know, this might be as good as it gets. I mean, I, I do think there's some validity in that and I would like to further that conversation. Um, and again, for me, it's, it's just so much of the openness. So if there was a way we could create some sort of boundary on some of these items that you're requesting that are open-ended without having to go through maybe a full expense to you, just more of that negotiation that we can have. Um, I think that the drainage is just going to be something that is going to be very, very difficult. Um, at least within our ordinances, it does say that by, you know, our ordinances, you have to um, not negatively impact drainage anymore than what you currently have. So we'll have to make sure that's extremely buttoned up. Um, but Mr. Bats, if there is a way that we can have some sort of and whether that be a joint with council, I know there was a special council meeting as well, but I'm sure a lot of our same questions and concerns council is going to have as well.
So uh, the process that, that's available to us is meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, public meetings with input. So um, uh, you guys can table this and give direction on things you'd like to bring brought back for further discussion. Uh, I don't believe there's any opportunity for off-channel discussions between staff or members of the commission. Um, our, the council directed us to tighten up the PDD process considerably, which is why we have all the information we have tonight. Traditionally, we wouldn't have had all this. Um, so uh, and, and whether council's open to a, a joint meeting or not, that's not something I could speak to tonight.
Okay. So I said moving forward, maybe what we can do is uh.
I'm happy to suggest, so I'm happy to maybe suggest something. We are happy to invest in going over all, every single uh, uh, modification that we're asking for and submit. Explain the rationale behind each one of those, okay? We're happy to do that. And then if there's feedback, so we will do this by this Tuesday, we'll do it by Friday. We'll submit that to you. If you believe, if you have any questions, uh, then maybe we'll do correspondence back and forth. That is okay.
Don't know if we are allowed to do that.
Staff can, uh, the commission cannot.
Yes.
Okay, so uh, if you, you'd have to give us clear direction on what you'd like to see, then we'd work with the applicant to try and bring it back at the next PNC meeting in September.
So those letters could go into the next meeting in September for us to review and then we could give you your, your, our feedback at that point in time during the meeting.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't we table it? We will take it upon ourselves uh, to submit a few options. And then for us to have this conversation again in uh, in early September.
I'll tell you exactly when the next meeting is. Second, September the second.
Yeah. That will happen, absolutely. And we'll, we'll, we'll give as much detail as possible, all the rationale behind them. We'll give more feedback. Uh, for instance, like we believe, Alan and I were talking, we believe we can, that the concerns around drainage, what's happening now. We believe our development will mitigate some of that. Like, we really believe that and we will show you numbers as to how it's being done. I know there's skepticism around. It's normal. Uh, there's emotion. We don't act emotionally. We have the science behind us. We have the engineers working. If somebody has an issue with the science, then they're welcome to bring their own experts and submit contrary arguments, scientific arguments. Uh, I mean, that's just the way it works, right? So, so I know Alan, for instance, uh, is, is brought by courts to come in as an expert witness on, uh, on those kind of matters. So uh, it's simple. Uh, if somebody has an issue scientifically, happy to challenge our assessments, our studies that we invested in. We're happy to, to entertain that. And meanwhile, we will send you an exact stat. Exact rationale for every single one of those. And maybe some more detail on the big picture. And we'll just hope that we'll have a better conversation next time.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Additional, yes, and any additional comments for him before we make a motion? Does anybody like, would like to take a table? But are we going to say we're tabling with?
Just the whole thing, right?
Each, everything, everything.
I'll do it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, make a motion to recommend, make a motion to recommend the city council. No, this is not a reclamation. I'm sorry. This is a motion to table.
Okay, I'm making a motion to table a request by Samir Shadon with One Stop Group LP on behalf of Hatch Intercell LLC for the establishment of a PDD plant development district with a base zoning of R two and R three loads of district districts for approximately three hundred and twenty-nine acres. Generally located one mile north of the intersection of Highway two eighty-one and F N eighteen sixty-three.
A second? So we have a first and a second, all in favor?
I know.
All opposed on and none in.
So I'll just mention that the anticipated consideration at council on August nineteenth will no longer take place. Instead, we'll be looking forward to the September second uh, PNC meeting and possibly the September ninth council meeting. If it moves forward after that.
Public hearing and consider the establishment of R one residential district zoning, approximately point two zero one square miles of land, generally located south and east of the Bell Oaks Ranch subdivision. North of the Montatola subdivision and west of Central Ridge subdivision adjacent to the city of Bouverie, Texas. Yes, so the law I checked was actually in the motion at the last council meeting in early July. Um, when the property, when the property is in its full state, we have to establish a zoning. This was established through the development agreement already as a R one residential with a minimum of five acre lot.
This was established through the development agreement already as a R one residential with a minimum of five acre lot. They are surrounded by boughs, which is part of who originally R one and Monticola is in the shape, but it's closely like R one something.
Is the applicant here?
Um, no, there wasn't really applicant, it's just city process, got it.
I have no issues.
No issue.
Neither. All right, so I make a motion that we've, is it recommending approval or is it flat approval? I think it's, I think it's still a recommendation, definitely, because it's still going to get a council. I make a motion that we recommend approval of item two point five for the establishment of R one, a residential district zoning, approximately point two zero one square miles of land, generally located south and east of the Bell Oaks Ranch subdivision, north of the Montola subdivision and west of Centennial Ridge subdivision adjacent to the city of Old Berlin, Texas. A second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? I don't have any opposed, none, motion, no. Okay.
Table.
Uh, okay, so number three on the agenda, any public comment not related to posted agenda items? None? And we are adjourned at eight twenty-six. Thank you, everybody.